Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining our virtual meeting at the City of Prospect Heights regarding a city council meeting. And we have our deputy clerk, Karen Schulteis, that will begin the proceedings.
Good evening and welcome to the city council's special teleconference meeting of the mayor and city council of the City of Prospect Heights, held on Monday, August 10, 2020, at 6:30 PM. Pursuant to the governor's executive orders, the governor has made a disaster declaration in response to COVID-19. And the head of the public body has determined that an in-person meeting of all individual council members under the Open Meetings Act is not practical or prudent. The chief administrative officer, Joe Wade, will attend in person. The council members of the public may continue to attend the meeting virtually via Zoom as attendance in the boardroom is not feasible. In accordance with the applicable statutes of the state of Illinois and ordinances of the City of Prospect Heights, notice is hereby given that the special teleconference meeting will be recorded and is available on the city's website. Attendants who wish to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be provided an opportunity to do so during the teleconference. There's a five-minute time limit for speakers, during which time the teleconference meeting is anticipated that there will be discussion and consideration of, and if so, determine action upon matters that are contained in the agenda. I'm now turning this over to Nicholas J. Helmer, mayor, who is presiding over this meeting.
Again, good evening and welcome. Let's meet with a roll call vote to begin the meeting. Joanna, are you available? Are you available, Joanna? Can you take yourself off mute? Patrick, do you have Joanna off mute?
She's not on mute, mayor. I don't see her in the list as calling in yet.
Okay. I just hit the star six. It looks like I was muted, but it was not showing I was muted.
All right. You're on the air, ma'am. Go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry. Alderman Dolick?
Here.
Alderman Ludwiscson?
Here.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Here.
Alderman Quinn?
Here.
Alderman Cameron? It's not very clear when we're muted, so let's give Alderman Cameron a chance. Alderman Cameron, can you hear me? Can you hear star? Can you hit star six? Okay, can you hear me now? Yes, yes. Alderman Cameron, we're on a roll call.
Yeah, I know. I know. I heard you. I'm here. I don't know what happened.
Thank you. It happens to me, too.
All right. You have Alderman Cameron, and she is available. Can you say, "Here," Alderman, please?
Here.
All right. Joanna, what else do you have?
We also would like to approve the minutes from July 22, 2020, of the regular teleconference city council meeting minutes.
All right. Joe, will you take that, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. We do have for consideration the July 27 meeting minutes. If there are no additions or corrections, we will entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second, Alderman Adams?
We have a motion. We have a second. Any other considerations? If not, please take a roll call.
Alderman Ludwiscson?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn?
Motion is approved, 5-0. Joe, you want to continue? The meeting has started.
Thank you. Item three, we do not have appointments, confirmations, or proclamations tonight, which brings us to four public comment on agenda matters. Citizens are asked to identify the agenda item they would like to address and will be provided the opportunity to speak to the issue after its presentation and before city council action. And, Mr. Mayor, I understand from Karen you'd like to exempt this tonight for Mr. LaHore's presentation.
He will give his presentation.
Yes.
Okay.
He will give his presentation regarding the towers, Crown Towers, that we've been talking about for quite some time. You want to do that now, Joe?
That is your desire, mayor. We can do it at the time of the agenda item or at present, whichever you prefer.
Let's do it right before the agenda item, so it ties into what is being, will be presented or a roll call that will be taken. So let's hold that up for that purpose. What's next?
Very good, sir. Which brings us to item five, staff, elected officials, and commission reports. Wherever you wish to start, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Let's, uh...
Public comment?
Ask you any of the public comments.
Public comments on agenda matters. We have a substitute, a very bright and very exciting young man called Bob Tannahill, who is stepping in for the assistant person for Sherry Grace, our finance officer. Bob, are you available?
I am. Do you hear me, mayor?
I can, yes.
Hello? Okay, good. Yeah, Sherry had asked me to sit in tonight for her. She had a prior engagement, so we were talking about some things that have come up with our finances. Just to let everybody know, right now, we're working on closing the month of July, which puts it at about 25% of the year expended. A few things that are looking pretty good. We have income tax, sales tax, and use tax receipts are showing over 30% of the budget through the end of July. Our vehicle stickers continue to come in. We've collected through the end of July about 32% of the budgeted revenue. Places for eating taxes received today total about $33,900. It's about 14% of the budgeted revenue, and probably still, a lot of them are feeling kind of the effects of COVID. Building and zoning fees in total are about 30% of the budget revenue, which is being driven by about $91,000 collected in the building permits, which we're seeing as people who are staying at home are doing a little more home projects, which has increased the building permits for that. Rental inspections are a little stale because of the COVID. Right now, they're about 8% of budget. So right thing right now, expenses are holding pretty good. And then hopefully, for the next council meeting, we'll have a Treasury report for the end of the month.
All right. Thank you. We could ask you, Alderman, for questions if they so please. Identify yourself with your name first. Any questions for Tannahill regarding the budget?
This is Alderman Ludwiscson. Just a quick comment about the vehicle stickers. That's 30% of this year's budget, but it's really, there was a delay in the collection or a loud delay in the collection, so some of these, we're going to be over, I guess, to say, in our collection for vehicle stickers because we still have part of last year's that's coming in for this year. Is that correct? I mean, typically, at this point, we'd be at 30%. We'd be at, realistically, a couple, 2% or 3% for the people that relate.
That's correct.
Okay. And then the other thing is on the rentals. I mean, I get that these are bad times and that, but I would guess those places are still full. Are we sending out notices to them?
At this point, I believe they are, but I have to get back to you on that to talk with Sherry if that's continuing.
Okay, thanks. Alderman Ludwiscson? Yes.
This is Director Peterson. We are 100% of our collections that came in this year. What this reflects is we email or send out bills in January, we're collecting by March 31st, so the major collection of rental inspection money for this fiscal year will happen in the last quarter of the year. And that's been the method that this has been since I started, before I started here as the director, and that's how we continue to operate. So you will see a big spike come in February, March, into the end of fiscal year.
Okay, so the economy's not in effect on how fast those are coming in?
No, we did not have an issue with the delays for this fiscal year that ended on the end of April. So we were on track. So, and if the way this is going to be working for this year, we should be fine in the last quarter of the year.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
You're welcome.
All right. Dan, let's continue with you, Dan Peterson, Director of the Building Development.
Thank you very much, sir. As Mr. Tannahill said, we've had a busy summer, and it's continuing that way. We have five zoning cases and text amendments for the August 27 meeting coming up. Three of them are variances for setbacks and garage additions. And we have two text amendments related to the sports wagering request from Hawthorne Club OTB. Now that sports wagering is legal, they're looking to amend their text for, to deal with sports wagering there. And then we have our text amendment for allowing of recreation, certain recreational equipment in front yards. Additionally, on August 20th, the PGPA will be having their third special meeting to address the Lexington home proposal for up at the near school area. So that's what we've been up to, that we've had a very busy summer, and things are moving forward nicely. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on to Chief of Police, Jim Zalaki. All right, we can come back to that. It's the, if we can find him. Peter Falconi, Assistant City Administrator.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me out there?
No, we can't, Jim.
Okay. I was hitting star six. Okay. As long as you can hear me. All I have to report is we have a new officer that's going to be starting next Monday. His name's Barrett Lawer. He's already a trained officer, so he won't have to go to the academy. He's going to get sworn in next Monday at 4:00 PM at City Hall by mayor. And he will start in the morning. He'll do some admin work before he gets sworn in. And then he'll start with his FTO and ride with his FTO trainers for about 12 weeks, and then hopefully be up and running. We're still in the process of doing some backgrounds to get our second officer hired, and that's all I have to report.
All right. Thank you. Peter Falconi, Assistant City Administrator.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Two quick items for the council's attention. First, as we all know, COVID-19 has restricted the city's efforts in increasing the participation in our census, though we can't do our major block party that we want to do on the east side. I've mentioned to the council before that we're going to have smaller events partnering with park districts and libraries. One thing that is in the books that's been scheduled is a drive-in concert. It's a partnership between the Prospect Heights Park District and the city for a drive-in concert over by the Barada Center, by the ballpark. It's going to be, Focal Point is going to be the band that's going to play. Please check out the city's E-News or go onto the park district's website to register. You have to pre-register for this event. They are only allowing a certain number of vehicles to be attending this, and this is strictly for Prospect Heights residents. And more information, like I said, is available on both the city E-News and on the park district website. A second item I want to bring to the attention of the council is, this morning or this afternoon, I had a conversation with city clerk Joanna, and I've also had a similar conversation in the past with city treasurer Rich Tibbetts. And it was about our use of Zoom and the fact that we do not have both staff and elected officials on the video. I mentioned to both of them that it's, we have that capability if the council so chooses to use video, but right now, it's just a matter of buying the equipment. All of our computers here at City Hall do not have video capability, but iPads that some of the elected officials have would. So Joanna asked that I bring this up to the council for maybe possible discussion either tonight or in the future, to see what the elected officials are interested in doing as far as utilizing more of Zoom's components. And that is my report, sir.
All right. Excuse me. Thank you. We'll think about that, and we'll bring it up again next time. We've got Joe. Joe, I understand Mark Roscoe may not be present. Does he have a replacement, or do you want to give a report on Mark?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Mark is on a well-earned vacation. We have no items from Public Works, the standard operations, summer operations. There's some trees, tree damage with the storm, and they've followed up on that. As for my own report, just a couple of items. First of all, there's, just to remind everybody, there's no meeting coming up for August 24th. We've reversed that. That's why we're having a meeting tonight. And then also, Mr. Mayor, you'd inquired about communication we had from a county representative regarding the allocation of $331,000 from the CARES Act for Coronavirus Relief Fund. I just want to stress, this is an allocation, and there's two steps that the city has to do to make claim for this money. First of all, it can only be for Coronavirus expenses, things that we purchased personal protective equipment, maybe a very minimal amount of time where we've had workers assigned to COVID-related work, all things that we've kept a record of since basically going back to March. I will tell you that it's not only going to come close to $331,000. Additionally, the county is also asking that we make application to FEMA first, that the COVID Relief Fund that they are administering would be the second payment, stopgap measure. We look at this as we're a community, so we've also inquired if we could add in expenses that have come from the fire district, the library, park district. They also have nominal expenses. The county at this time has said, "No, we're only interested in city expenses." But it's a long way around the barn to say that we're far from $331,000, and there are a few steps along the way. So that's kind of the fine print of the Coronavirus Relief Fund. And that's being the my report.
All right. Thank you. John O'Driscoll, city attorney.
Yes, sir. I have nothing to report. Then with President Trump's executive order, we're going to be trying to figure out the implications that might have for payroll taxes.
All right. Thank you. Let's go to the big staff. How about Joanna Zianuk?
Oh, thank you, mayor.
City clerk.
Thank you, sir. I'm just going to remind everyone that I did send an email to the council about a community power deal, and that is headed up by the Citizens Utility Board. There are things that have happened in the past, 10 years ago. Right now is a different time. I'm concentrating more about how the pandemic may loom or is looming, and I'm thinking about the low-income housing, the businesses that need all kinds of financial help so that we're more ready in the future. It demands a referendum. We may not be ready for that. But at this time, I'm only asking that we inquire. I am willing to work on that myself with the help of staff. I don't think this is a monstrous job, just to find out what kind of a deal we can have because the real big news is other municipalities are using it. It could be better than what an individual resident could do for themselves or a business. Many people don't know about it. I don't have time to go into it. So I wanted to just find out what is the deal, and if we could put that on the workshop agenda for next meeting. I'm looking for some feedback as to what the next steps could be. I just think it's good information to acquire, and that's my report, if I can get a little bit of feedback on that.
Thank you. That is what we'll do. Joe, if you would get this on the next agenda to look into it and see if there's something there for us. Thank you. Rich Tibbetts?
You're welcome. Thank you.
Rich, are you available?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the only comment I have about the use of Zoom has to do with developing a method of doing a hybrid meeting, which would involve council and staff at City Hall being recorded as we normally would, and then the public members being on Zoom or watching on TV or on our streaming service otherwise, and being able to participate, obviously, during the meeting via Zoom in the council room. I can explain more of that at a later time. I'll put out some information as to what we potentially can be capable of doing. And that's all I have for tonight.
All right. Thank you. Michelle Cameron, Alderman, Ward 2.
Good evening. I don't have anything, mayor, today, but thank you.
All right. Thank you. Kathy Quinn, Alderman, Ward 2.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to thank Peter. The newsletter went out, and you'll be happy to know residents actually read it because I've gotten some really good inquiries from residents for different issues and things they have going on in the community. Thank you, Chief Zalaki, for addressing one of those issues immediately. I appreciate you reaching out. So that is my report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Wendy Morgan Adams, are you present, Wendy?
Yes. Good evening, mayor.
Good evening.
The one thing I just wanted to inquire is that I know that the remote Zoom teleconference has been allowed up through this time period. I understood that we were talking about coming back to council physically in September, and I don't know whether the remote Zoom teleconference meetings are going to be extended after August. Does anybody know that? Maybe our city attorney does.
Well, my intention is to hold this off till January. If you don't listen to the news every day, then you're making a mistake. People are dying every day. Hundreds of people are being, you know, tested for the virus and have it. There are too many people around that get it because of the things they do or don't do. So if I can, you know, if I have some say over it, which I hope I do, we can start January with the going back to the full of council meetings.
It was my understanding that the governor only extended through August. Does anybody have any information on that? Has it been further extended?
John, do you have the latest on that?
Yeah, it's been, it's only good until, I think, it's the 27th of August, and then everybody expects to see another declaration after that. He's doing it every 30 days or so.
Right. All right. Anything else, Wendy?
No, that's all tonight. Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Pat Ludwiscson, Mayor, I like calling you mayor, Alderman of the 4th Ward.
Just a comment on the electrical, electric aggregation. The last time we had this, I was around then. Been around a long time, maybe too long, but last time the council heard this, the public was, it wasn't a matter of the rate as much. The differential was too small to really make a difference, and we weren't sure where it was going anyway, if the rates were going to go up or down, or whether we'd win or lose if we did this aggregation. But it was more that the public wanted to have their own say in who they selected. So I know there's many ways you can do this, where it could be mandatory that people use it, or optional if they use it, but the public, the last time, seemed to be in favor of choosing their own provider.
It's just time to revisit. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, that's something changed with the way it is.
It's a matter of learning more.
Yeah, I don't think it's a rate issue. I think it's more of a, if there's a way to do it where the people can be a part of it or not be a part of it, but the idea of forcing everybody into it and then something going south with it, they didn't like that.
They can opt out. There's more to it, Pat. They can opt out.
No, no, that's an important clarification. There are options to opt out two times before it's initiated, but once the city goes down that path, you're locked in. So it's important to know that.
Right. We need to get the details, what the current details are.
Yeah, and to me, that's equal to rate. So, I mean, we need to have as much detail on that as we do any kind of rate.
All right. Let's put that on the workshop session, too. We have Matt Dolick, Alderman, Ward 5.
Thank you, sir. I have no report tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Karen, what's next?
If you have support, there, otherwise, then we'd like to reintroduce the public comments and see if there are any other comments.
All right. Public comments on everything we just discussed, but keep it very short, please, five minutes at the most. Any public comments on what was all that you talked about? All right. There being none, what's our next step?
John, or did you?
No.
That brings us back to new business.
Yeah, we're on, item A, new business. Go ahead.
Item 6A, we're asking for a request for first waiver of an ordinance approving a special use permit for a sit-down restaurant with outdoor seating at 1421 North Rand Road. And the request for first waivers, since we only have a meeting for another month, this would give the opportunity for the applicant to expedite the permit process and other work.
So moved.
Okay. Morgan Adams?
We have a motion. We have a second. Any other comments? This is the restaurant at Thomas &amp; Rand. I met with the gentleman twice, once today, as a matter of fact. It's going to be a very nice place. I like to call it a white tablecloth restaurant and not a fast food type place, so I'm looking forward to it. So if there are no other comments, we're still on the approval process. Anyone else? All right. Let's take a roll call, please.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Ludwiscson?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Joe, we're going to handle item B now.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is the ordinance approving a special use permit for a sit-down restaurant with outdoor seating. I believe the applicant is with us tonight, and that is Mr. Brizolera. And also, I'll ask Dan Peterson, if you could also please set this up for us. It was approved unanimously by the Plan Commission Zoning Board, and if you can just give us a little bit of detail and also an opportunity... And if you can just give us a little bit of detail and also an opportunity for the applicant to introduce his business.
My pleasure, Administrator Wade, Council. Mr. Brizolera is the new owner of the former Niko's Restaurant. They have applied for and received unanimous approval, as Administrator Wade said, for a sit-down restaurant with outdoor seating. This is going to be a family neighborhood restaurant, pub. He's, you know, it's going to be a wonderful change for the corner that's seen a very nice modernization with the Thorntons, the Lolas moving into Long Vacant, Secret Garden, and now Mr. Brizolera bringing a sit-down restaurant versus a year-old hot dog shop to the town. So, Mr. Brizolera, Jay, it's your opportunity to talk about your restaurant.
Hi. Thanks for the time. Yeah, just to piggyback on that, we're looking to bring a full-service, sit-down restaurant with outdoor seating and a bar to the old Niko's location, which is iconic in the area, especially when you see some of the feedback we've gotten. We're looking to do a lot of shareable plates, some entrees, appetizers. For example, you know, wings, possibly flatbreads, steamed buns, tacos, bibimbap, things like that. Yeah, we just want to be a comfortable, local hangout for everyone to go to. We're looking at doing lunch specials for the high school crowd, because I know when I was in high school at Hershey, I used to go there. So, you know, we like, that's, that's the gist of what we're looking at there.
All right. Any questions? Identify yourself first, please. Well, Jay, it really sounds like you've got a winner. We spoke twice, and I like the sound of what we spoke about. So good luck with what you're doing. When do you think it'll open up?
We're doing a full renovation, so there's nothing left in there. We're looking at probably just after the first of the year.
All right. And the roller skating orders section with the booths outside, what are you doing with those?
That, we want to keep the, keep that covering, just reface it and do an outdoor seating area under there so it's covered, but still open to get some sun and everything.
Good. And I hope it works out, because I never saw anybody wearing food, you know, on roller skates.
Yeah.
For years. Well, good job. Good job. We're enthused about new people, and we'll help you out in any way we can.
Thank you very much.
All right, Joe, what? Thank you. Joe, what's next?
We would like to entertain a vote for that.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Second reading, motion.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve.
So moved. Alderman Ludwiscan.
Second. Alderman Quinn.
Got it. Any further discussion? If not, take a roll call, please.
Thank you. Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Ludwiscan?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Joe, what's next?
Well, item C is related to this request. This is a letter request. By the way, it's a very good business plan. An ordinance increasing the number of Class C liquor licenses, full liquor, from three to four, and reducing the number of Class C-1 liquor licenses, beer and wine only, which Niko's had, from four to three at the request of Park Local Restaurant. And this is first reading.
All right. We don't need a vote for that, but is there a discussion or a question? There being none, let's get it on for a second reading. Are we looking for that now, Joe, or are we going to do it next time?
No, that's not, we can bring that back at our next meeting in September.
All right. And that sounds like about the time he'll be opening up, I think. So that would be good.
Which brings us to D, is staff memo, an ordinance approving certain variations for 905 Edward Road, Prospect Heights. Dan Peterson, could you please describe this?
Thank you very much, Administrator Wade. The owners of 905 Edward Road had applied for a building permit to add a driveway so they could access their rear yard. And during the inspection process, it was discovered that due to some equipment along the side of the house, the owner had shifted the driveway to, too close to the side yard, and that required a variation due to the equipment in the way. But during that time, it was also, we found out that the owners were, had a 37-foot recreational vehicle, fifth-wheel camper, that they were intending to park on this three-quarter acre lot on Edward. The Plan Commission heard, which also needed variation. The Plan Commission heard the case and voted to recommend denial. Subsequently, since that time, Mr. Borowski has submitted pictures of the location, adjusted his plan, and has met with the neighbor that did not sign the original letter of no objection. And they, after meeting with the residents, have agreed to that they would support going forward with a variation now on their adjacent property where this is all going to happen. And Mr. Borowski is on the phone with us this evening if they have any questions. However, staff, due to the fact that there's new evidence that was submitted between the Plan Commission meeting, PZBA meeting tonight, that may have impacted a vote, specifically the support of the application from the immediate neighbor. Staff's recommendation is to, by ordinance, which the council has the authority to do, to recommit it back to the PZBA to reconsider. However, you also have the choice of approving, overturning the denial, but that would take a four-vote majority, or just denying it outright. However, staff believes that the new evidence should be considered by the PZBA. Thank you very much.
All right. Any questions before we move on? All right, Joe?
Yes, Dan? Dan, this is, this is Pat. You know how I'm a stickler about process sometimes? I just want to make sure that this is not an unusual case, because I don't want, I don't want every ZBA denial coming back with something changed while it's go back. Because typically, you have, is it a one-year moratorium on reapplication?
There is a time period of one year to come back with the exact same application. However, one, some of the questions that were raised by the PZBA had to do specifically with the lack of the support from the neighbor to the north, which had directly abutted where the variances were going to impact. And subsequently, between then and now, the neighbor has given written support of the variation. So that was one of the grounds for, you know, what was raised as an issue for denial. So I think because that's new evidence and was cited as a reason, that it should be reconsidered.
Okay, then you're not, we're not leaving this first reading, then. We're going to, as a council, you're looking for some kind of direction to remand this back to the ZBA, then, correct?
Correct. Per our ordinance, there are three options: either overturn the recommendation, support the recommendation, or recommit it back to reconsider any new evidence that has been presented.
This is all--
Okay, with that, then, I would like to make a motion that we ask staff to go back to the ZBA to relook at this based on staff's recommendation that the conditions have changed.
Second, then, Morgan Adams.
Are there any other questions? Then, does anybody else have any other questions?
So we've assigned staff to send it back, basically, is what we said, right? I don't think we do, I don't, John, do we need a vote on a first reading problem to send it back?
On the motion, Mayor, if we could get a roll call vote on that, please.
Okay. So the motion is to send it back, staff to investigate, send it back, et cetera, and we need a roll call. Thank you.
All right. Alderman Ludwiscan?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. We move on? Joe, you're on G. No, we go to surface good sales. I'm sorry. Joe, are you with us?
I'm sorry. I was muted. Yes, sir. This is item six E, request for waiver of first read for an ordinance directing the sale of surplus property, public works vehicle, 2010 Ford Crown Victoria. And we're asking waiver of first reading because we won't have a meeting for another month, and this will enable us to clear the agenda as well as our parking lot.
So moved.
Back in. Morgan Adams.
We have a motion. We have a second. Further discussion?
Yeah, this is Alderman Cameron. We didn't do E yet.
This is E.
Oh, okay. Okay. I thought you were, he was reading F. Sorry.
No, we're on E. So we have a motion to go ahead and move it to a second reading. The motion has been made, the second has been stated, and we need a roll call for that, I presume.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Ludwiscan?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
All right. Now we go ahead and approve this. So let's have a motion do that, and if there's more discussion, let me know. Motion to approve a second reading on this matter.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second from Alderman Quinn. Any other discussions regarding a Crown Victoria? Can you imagine when you were a kid? You really would have wanted one of those. A Crown Victoria. Can't believe it. So let's go ahead, and unless there is any other suggestions or comments, let's go ahead and take a roll call.
Alderman Ludwiscan?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero for the sale, the immediate sale of a Crown Victoria from the Public Works Department. Moving on?
Yes, sir. Item G is a resolution authorizing a civil engineering services agreement with Gualt Hamilton Associates for Phase II Design Engineering Services for the Surface Transportation Program-funded Old Willow Road Seminole Lane Resurfacing Project. This would be scheduled for 2021. The value of the contract is not to exceed $66,205. As part of a program, the Federal Surface Transportation Program, for which the city applied and was awarded, will pay $556,000 or 70% of the project cost of this improvement. So are there any questions? And if not, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
I just, Morgan Adams, I just have a question. So can you give us a ballpark as to this $66,000? Is this a city expense, or is only a portion of the city's expense? And if so, what is that portion?
Sure. Well, STP, Surface Transportation Program Funding, it's a competitive process that we compete with all of the communities within the Northwest Council of Mayor's, area communities. The city with a resolution by the council, applied for, was authorized to apply for this grant, program funding, and we had obtained it. And it pays roughly 70% of the cost. The total cost would be about $796,000, and STP will fund $556,000. So the city will pay the balance, the 30% of it, roughly about $240,000, which is, which is quite a value for the size of this project. And also, as background, we did a, about three years ago, we did a street rating system where we evaluated the pavement condition of all of our streets. And at present, our worst street is Old Willow Seminole. So it is, it is needed, and the funding would be valuable to the city.
So just a point of clarification, is the $66,000 going to be our cost?
Well, it would be a portion of the, of the 70% funding. So it would be paid for by, 70%, I should say, 70% of it would be paid for by the Surface Transportation Program.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? So, Joe, we can move on with this.
And we're asking for a vote of approval so that we can get this filed and get the process underway with the Illinois Department of Transportation.
All right. Let's get a motion to approve.
So moved.
Anybody got a motion? We got a double motion. All right. We got a motion. We got a second, and there is no further discussion. So let's go ahead and take a roll call, please.
Thank you. Alderman Ludwiscan?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Joe, under old business, you wanted to handle this in a different way, or are we proceeding?
Let's see. Old business, yes, at the ordinance, we have two ordinance before us. And as background, I'm going to ask either Director Peterson or City Attorney O'Driscoll. They've spent considerable time on this. They can set it up. And then we also have the presentation, the PowerPoint presentation that Mr. LaHore has provided for tonight as well.
Well, I said, let's go with Mr. LaHore's presentation before that. Can we still do that, or do you want to do it differently?
I think that'd be fine, Mayor.
All right. Let's get him up there from radio land, I guess. And let's hear from him. I have a, we all should have pictures and, you know, quite a few pictures, as a matter of fact, and what they're proposing, Crown, posing, and what Mr. LaHore has a comment to. Mr. LaHore, I know this is a big project. I know this is a tough project, but we're still on the five-minute clock. Can you handle that?
I sure can, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council. I talked to Alderman, Pat Ludwiscan, and I know that this presentation is in the packet. So I'll be very brief and kind of high-level, because I believe that you've actually had access to the-- that you've actually had access to the, to it. Um, I would like to point out that there's approximately 70% of people, or 70% people on this call, and I think about 50-plus percent, or 50 or plus people are from some postings that we've done on this nextdoor.com app of concerned residents and some flyers we passed out. So I would like to thank them for attending it. Some of them were none, uh, not educated on kind of what was going on. So I appreciate them coming out. Um, I did have one thing to point out when I was looking at the agenda, it looks as though there's two, um, old business, one being a micro pine, and one being a monopole, and, um, I'm concerned, I was under the impression that we were going to be having a vote whether we put up a industrial communication tower or not. So maybe that could be spoke to, um, at the appropriate time. Uh, Patrick, can you go to the next slide, please? So, um, this is some things that have been seen before, but, um, last Monday, um, Alderman Ludwiscson, myself, and Manche Campa, who's, um, on the PCBA, met with the fire chief and their attorney to see if there was a possibility of working together, our attorneys, because I know there's some legalities around this. Um, it didn't go very far. Basically, we were told by the chief, um, that it's, it's kind of in your guys' hands, and, um, they don't know what's going to be built there, they don't have a lot of control over everything. They, uh, extended this lease in 2018, um, and this went to the, uh, PCBA starting April of 2019, several times, back and forth. Um, but their comments about if we don't want it, they don't want it, um, seems to have gone by the wayside. A couple of comments from the councilmen's in these meetings is, this site is not going to work if there's no safety issues, uh, uh, in our area. The aesthetics of the proposal is drastically different, there's no 911 issues, uh, we can continue to find variances, we'll literally be in our backyards. The variance, which you'll see from the next slide, it's supposed to be 500 feet, I understand we live in a residential area. Uh, backup, Patrick, sorry, I'm not quite done on that. Um, but this is literally going to be 35 feet from my backyard, hovering over, um, our backyard, and aesthetically not pleasing, doesn't fit the Prospect Heights location, um, and if it is approved, we'll regret it, um, and it goes on and on. So, um, you can go to the next slide, otherwise I'm going to be kind of really pushing that five minutes. Thanks, Patrick. Um, so I was basically told, you know, if you want to, you know, fight this or whatever, you have to prove that it's going to be injurious to the enjoyment of the backyard. Um, I would be actually embarrassed to have people over in, um, a backyard that I spent a lot of money in, if this thing is hovering over, um, and it's going to be a, a complete eyesore, not only for my backyard, for my neighbors, but also for one of our main intersections. Um, and there's just some additional information on the variances. Uh, next one, please, Patrick? Um, so again, I would loo, um, in a, this is actually kind of the same thing, it's just going to be an embarrassment if it's put up, um, and I believe it's going to lower the property values and the marketability of my home. Uh, next slide, please, Patrick? So this is some studies, because there's been a lot of talk about how do you prove that it's going to lower the product, you know, the, the value of your home. Um, there's some studies that are here that, uh, have been out. 94% of home buyers are less interested in buying a property that has a cell tower if there's not a cell tower, right? And we're not talking about like a flagpole that's currently there, or concealed tower, or whatever we want to call it. This is going to be a monstrosity with several rays, um, and very intrusive is my property. And also documentation is it could be up to 20% of, um, of the value of your home that it could go down. In my case, that could be over $100,000, um, plus, um, if we're looking at that 10 to 20% value. So, um, I just want to make that clear, that seems to fall on deaf ears, and I think that if you just look at it compared to what's there and what's not there, it's pretty reasonable, but understand that it'd be more difficult to sell my house, and I would have to take less money for my house when I was to go to sell it. Uh, next one, please, Patrick, and this is the last slide. Um, so the proposal, again, went to the zoning board and several council multiple times, came back with no recommendations. Um, the new one aesthetically is not a concealed tower, regardless if you do a micro pine or not, it's, it's not really what was meant to be there. Uh, I think, uh, Alderman Ludwiscson has did some homework, and he's got some things to talk about when it gets to him, but, um, I don't think it's going to represent our city in a positive way. I think it's going to be an eyesore and an embar, an embarrassment. You know, the deli for you is being revamped, the Walgreens always looks good, the fire department looks good, the city hall looks good, even the cell gas station, and now we're going to basically, under this progressive plan, we're going to have something that's going to be the crown of our town, that's going to be what we are going to pass, you know, several times a week, right? So, uh, the sense of the residence is that the onus has really been on us to kind of push back on this. Um, the deputy chief, uh, when we talked to him, we said it's a pure financial win, uh, which is about $18,000 that they would get for this expansion, when we're paying as taxpayers $4.2 million on a $4.8 million budget. I think that it almost gets to the point where it's greed, right? Uh, they're, 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 they're looking to deface our, our, our city, in my, uh, my opinion, based on $18,000, where for a town of 17,000 people, I think 4.2 coming out of our taxes is pretty sufficient. Um, and then-
Five minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Attorney O'Driscoll, is there, uh, would you entertain any other public comment, um, on this issue at this time?
This is Carl Camalucci from the task law firm representing Crown. I think we'd like an opportunity to respond to that since, uh, Mr. LaHore was given an opportunity to give the same presentation that he gave at the last meeting.
And you're going to give the same presentation that you gave at the last meeting, but you have five minutes, go ahead.
Actually, I did not give this presentation in the last meeting.
Well, many of the slides were similar. We were not planning to- We were not, uh, planning on giving a presentation tonight because we were informed that that was not, uh, part of the agenda for tonight, but, uh, first of all, I just want to object to that presentation having been given. Obviously, all members of the public have a right to, uh, give public comment under the Open Meetings Act, but, uh, it is very unusual for, uh, a member of the public to be granted the opportunity to make a PowerPoint presentation in this context. Public hearing has been held, uh, over two meetings before the, uh, Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals, and all of the evidence with respect to these issues has already been entered into that public hearing. Uh, this is not part of the public hearing and, uh, should not be considered as the basis for any decision by the City Council, and our concern is that this presentation only tends to prejudice the outcome of the proceeding. That being said, you know, I think there's some things that we've already addressed that Mr. LaHore discussed. Um, we've addressed them before on the record as well as at the, uh, City Council meeting a couple of weeks ago. Um, I don't want to rehash all of them now because I think it's there and you know it. Um, but the fact of the matter is that there isn't any variation that is required for this proposed tower. This proposed tower, uh, is subject to the variations that were previously granted in connection with the approval of the existing tower, and therefore, none of the setback requirements that generally apply, apply to this tower, and this tower complies with all of the terms of the variation granted in connection with the existing special use permit. So there's no need for a demonstration of hardship, there's no need for a variation. This use is the same use as was previously approved pursuant to the previous special use permit, namely, a telec, a wireless telecommunications, uh, tower. The difference is in the design of the structure that Crown is proposing to construct, and that is why we are seeking an amendment of the special use permit by the City Council. The City Council has the power to approve that amendment, but its power is subject to limitations imposed on it by the Telecommunications Act of, uh, uh, including certain items that we've gone over before, but I will point out again that any decision denying the application cannot have the effect of substantially prohibiting wireless service, and a decision cannot unreasonably discriminate among carriers. We've previously on the record described how, uh, denial of this application might do both of those things, and that is really the issue that is before you today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, uh, Joe, or John, no, what do we do next? I believe the PCBA-
Is anybody else would be invited? Sorry.
Yeah.
This is John O'Driscoll. Uh, I don't know if there's anybody else, um, out there that intends to give public comment on this issue, if, if that was your intent.
I actually have a question. So this is Ally-
Who are you?
It's Ally Delariva, and I live here also in Prospect Heights, and I guess where my confusion lies is, we were at two to three meetings where we publicly asked Crown to come up with different plans that would be different type of ideas, different type of sizes comparable to what's already here. We've gotten nothing from them. My second part of the question is, I was under the impression this was a modify, this is a remove or replace. The definition of a variation is change the difference in conditions within limits. This, they are taking it down and putting it up. If I bought a rental property and tore it down and made it bigger and didn't leave any part of it there, that's no longer a variation. So this shouldn't even be on the table to vote.
All right, thank you. Uh, quick question for Dan. Wasn't this at the PCBA and, uh, passed on to the council here lately?
Yes, sir. Um, this is, um, was first brought to the PCBA in 2019. Um, it had two hearings in that time, and Crown Castle, um, had applied for at that time a monopole with exterior mounted antenna arrays. Due to the public comment and concerns raised by the PCBA, they were asked to come back with a different, uh, approach, a concealed antenna structure. In last winter, we received a, a totally new application from Crown Castle that, um, had the monopole structure, so they followed the direction that was given based on the, the comments of the public and comments of the PCBA. Uh, that was heard by the PCBA in January and, um, was before the council in March. Uh, the coun, the council at that time recommitted it back to the PCBA for the establishment of the record, as the record did not, of the meeting did not match the, uh, vote taken and needed to be clarified. Uh, last month, uh, on July 25th, Crown Castle, um, came back as to reestablish the record that was given in the January and presented meeting, and presented the monopole structure again as an alternative to show if you didn't like it originally and you didn't like this, but this is what was testified to, uh, what the technology had by their RF engineer, uh, was forwarded with a, um, split decision. Both of the decisions were negative from recommended denial from the PCBA. One was a vote of, um, three to, two to three on the monopole with the exterior mounted antenna arrays, and a one to four on the monopole, um, as those were the two, um, styles that Crown Castle had asked to have a recommendation made on. Therefore, it was before council two weeks ago, um, for first reading in which, um, it was presented to you as such. So that is what brings us here this evening. Nothing further at this time.
One question for, uh, the city attorney, this is Alderman Ludwiscson.
Yes.
Is there, it's on the agenda, to Scott's point, that it's on here like an either/or. That is, that is not the case, that both of, I'm, I'm, I'm asking you this, is that the case? Because both of these are identified exactly the same, like they're the same, the same request of approval, but they are different outcomes, but that does not mean that this vote isn't either/or. Is that correct?
So it was put on as either the monopole to be approved or the monopole to be approved?
But that is all within the, uh, confines of the approval in the first place. So it's a, is there approval, yes or no, and if there is, which of these? Or are you saying we need to go through A and B separately and up or down vote both of them?
Well, if you are approving the one, then automatically you're not going to be approving the other, right? You're only going to approve one special use.
Right, so, so you're saying we vote until there's an approval or until there's two denials?
Correct.
Thank you.
This, my name is Paul Nard, I'm a resident in Prospect Heights. Can someone explain what the resident Ally Delariva was explaining that you need to have a, because this pole's going in my neighborhood, so I'd like to hear more about it, but I did not understand this whole variation issue because I agree with her comment, if someone can clarify that, that if you're tearing down the structure entirely, isn't that seeking approval for a brand-new construction, not a variation of an existing structure?
This is Director Peterson. Um, the, the issue is, is in 1998, the, when the antenna was built up, there was a previous antenna at that height that served the fire department. When, in 1998, the owner of the, came in and sprinted the user, they applied for a use. Uh, in 1998, the use and the variation were established by ordinance, and that the special use and the variations run with the land. So therefore, under that, they have, as a ordinance, they have the right to construct, maintain, and operate a tele, telecommunications mi, tower at that site. They are not giving up that use, and as the attorneys, um, said that they can build within the air, that where they have the approvals, which is a special use to have a telecommunication, and they can build a new one to service them and keep their variations. If that use was to go away for six months, let's say Crown Castle had terminated the use of the Sprint, their client, um, then they would lose their special use approval. However, the fire department still must have 110-foot tall to have their radio services which were testified to. So as much as you think they would lose their variation, they don't, and they don't lose their use because they're continuing it, they just need to have, uh, modern technology to work today's, uh, network, which is what was testified at the public hearings. I hope that clarified your situation for you.
That, that was very clear, thank you. The one additional question I would ask is, I assume the citizens approved this slim, very concealable tower for the fire department because it wasn't an obvious eyesore. Based on the structure and see, uh, of what we've seen proposed for us as citizens, it would be the largest and most noticeable structure in our downtown Prospect Heights, which is not the case of the current tower. So I, I don't know that people approved it back then, knowing that they would be potentially then, um, falling into a tower that would be an eyesore for all the citizens that back up to it.
In, in 1998, I don't think the, and this is from myself, I don't think when this was brought forward by the applicant, and we can read into a lot of things, that people would ever think that they would be setting their thermostat temperatures by their cellphone, that they would be watching full-length feature films or conducting their businesses and sending reports via cellular communication. The technology has changed, and it was specifically asked where the coverage gaps were for that, and that was what was testified to by the radio frequency engineers that represented Sprint and the, the testimony from the others. So to expect, and it was testified to this, to expect the, uh, tower to, uh, perform at the same level in the same configuration, the technology is not there to do that today. So that's why they were seeking a change. We asked them to come back with a stealth, a new concealment option, which they did, which was again, not approved. So, uh, that's, you know, I, I hope that answers the question.
Dan, just a, a quick comment on what you said. Their actual, um, approvals they're looking for is three co-locates and the use of a different type of tower. They never, is it, I, I don't remember seeing anything about technology in the approval request. I don't think we approve a technology, uh, for cellular distribution. All we're doing is approving three, uh, co-locates on that tower, and according to the applicant, they need a different tower, uh, than what's there in order to make that happen. Or is there a technology part of this? I don't recall that.
It, the, the technology that they've stated goes to the justification for the new tower. They cannot utilize the same tower to put the new- They cannot utilize the same tower to put the new, the necessary antennas, and that was what was testified to. So it was for coverage gaps and then when, as they're, they're allowed to maintain and construct their cellular operations, our own ordinance requires that this tower then be three co-locate capable. And that's what's before, the question before us.
Okay, yeah. I mean, they discussed, or they've hung over, I had a few times, the FCC issue about denying multiple users of a tower and whatnot, but I don't recall there anything, being anything there that technology requires this new tower. Can you speak to also, Dan, to the fact that the footprint is bigger? Somebody brought up earlier, if I knocked down my house and rebuilt it, I had a previous variance that, you know, you can do whatever you want. We know that's not the case. But when the approval was granted in 98, was it granted based on a site plan and an actual footprint of leased property?
The exhibits that were shown in the 1998 show an area that was part of the leased area at that time. And to accommodate this, the ground equipment, the pole, as they show, is, would be partly in, but to accommodate the ground equipment, the fire department expanded, not any closer to the neighbors, but in their area from what the existing lease line is back to the east and to their building. So it's a slight increase in the ground area, but it's still within, on the lock control by the fire department and retained the special use. And that's the, what was the determination for this to go forward.
So you're saying the special use is on the entire, because I don't remember seeing any exhibits about the entire fire district's lot line. Only the lot line as defined within the scope of the tower. So you're saying that they could put this tower anywhere on their property that's owned by the fire district?
The way that, the way that the, the way that the variation was written, is they have it within the property to be any closer than, closer than 500 feet. And this is what was discussed with Attorney Kearney Beck when this first came in, and they have the right within the area. And as they are not encroaching any closer to any of the residents than what was already approved, they have the right to go back in and build the tower to maintain their usage and their approval for their usage.
Morgan Adams, can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
So, so I'm a little confused about one thing. So I understand what you've said. My question is, you know, the design that they have proposed, no one has ever told us that that is the only possible design that exists. That design is, you know, I think the question originally was whether or not that design is within the, within the special use and whether or not it's a deviation from the special use, which is a question I have. And whether or not another design could be done that would be a different, a more aesthetic design. So for example, if you have to do three different antennas or three different, three different types, could you do it more on a pop can with, you know, with the pencils on top going up, three different sets of pencils and make it more sleek and cover it with a nice slim evergreen or pine tree as opposed to this humongous, you know, monstrosity that really is very negative-looking in the community?
That's a, that's a great question. However, the application that came forward from the applicant was for the monopine as was applied for, and then now the monopole with the, with the exterior rate. I cannot speak to any other design. That's not what was presented as part of the application.
Well, would, would Crown Castle be willing to come up with a different design?
This is Carl Kimalucci. Mr. May, would you like me to respond to that?
Yes, please.
So the first, the first design that Crown Castle proposed was a monopole. And it did propose an alternative design after the city objected to the monopole design in the form of a monopine. Then people didn't like the monopine, and so Crown has now offered the option between the monopole and the monopine. So from Crown's perspective, it's already considered an alternative design in an effort to address concerns about the appearance of the proposed tower. And it's not going to propose any alternative designs moving forward. These are the two designs that has submitted for consideration by the city council and it respectfully requests approval of the application.
You know, but that doesn't answer the question. The question is whether, okay, you don't want to make any further offerings for another design. The question is, can you? Because, because really, that's a big issue because if this gets denied, because you need four votes of the aldermen to approve this, and if you don't get them, we're all looking to deal with this in another venue. So the question is, can you do another design? Is it, is it in the realm of possibilities? And what would that require?
Well, as an initial matter, I believe we need three votes, but in terms of other design, I mean theoretically, it's possible to design towers in different ways. Much of it depends upon the needs of the carriers who will be using the tower because they need to be able to send and receive signals from the proposed tower to the other towers in their network, which are in the area. And so many of the design decisions that are made with respect to any particular tower are driven first and foremost by the signal needs of the carriers. There are other designs that are very infrequently used. I'd say the monopole is by far the most common. Sometimes there are monopines, that's also relatively uncommon, and there are some extremely uncommon other designs where, you know, antennas are fully enclosed. But the city council should be aware that those types of designs, because you have to enclose all of the equipment, result in much wider and taller structures than what has been proposed by Crown and likely would not be any more appealing from an aesthetic perspective. So theoretically, sometimes it's possible to, to offer other designs, but, but it's very uncommon and it's driven by the carrier's needs.
I have a question. This is Joanna.
Yes, go ahead.
Dan, this is a question to Dan Peterson. You had sent us a real slim kind of a monopine that's in Almhurst, did you say? Or I forget where that is currently. I sent that to everyone. Is that a problem to have that type of a design presented to us?
Again, I can't speak to if that's going to be the design that fits the carrier's antennas, as was testified to. Again, that photo that I sent was from quite a distance and I don't know the true dimension, so I can't speak to how it would fit in our location.
It would be a good question to Crown to, to help us with that one because it does exist. I don't know what carriers use that.
Well, let's, let's, you know what, let's, you know, five, I mean, no disrespect Joanna, but the five aldermen have to make this decision tonight. We're the ones that are going to vote on it. So I want to make sure that everyone gets their questions, and believe me, I have a lot of questions or comments about this. Carl, you had mentioned it's very unusual to have a concealed antenna type, but this one was done that way in 1998, correct?
Yes, but the, the existing tower was installed by the carrier themselves. And I believe at other times during, during these proceedings on the record, Travis Schenk from Crown Castle has described this, but historically before, when wireless was first, you know, becoming a thing, the carriers themselves put up their own, their own poles and towers to hold their wireless facilities. And so this initially, this, this existing pole was initially put up by a carrier, and it was just large enough for one carrier to put in the then-current technology and, you know, the antennas and things like that, which at the time were less powerful because, you know, obviously wireless didn't do the same things then as it does now. Over time, at some point, Crown purchased the tower and the model for the construction of wireless communication facilities shifted to third parties like Crown owning and operating the wireless telecommunication facilities and leasing space to the carrier so that multiple carriers could be in the same location. And in addition to that, the technology has obviously evolved over time, where now, you know, much more can be done with wireless, and there's many, many more wireless devices that require service. And so the facility, the technology of the antennas and the other pieces of equipment that go into the facility no longer would be able to be housed within the existing flagpole structure that's on the site. And so in order, in order for it to continue to be used, it would need to be upgraded, and that's why, that's why Crown brought this application.
I agree with you. And I want to state just for the record, I agree with your stance after reading, not yours, but Crown Castle's stance on the radiation issue. I don't believe that there is an issue with that, so I'm not claiming that at all. As far as Prospect Heights stifling, you know, people to have cellular ability or wireless services, I mean, we put this, we allowed this, as a city, this tower to be put in in 1998. So I mean, there can't be any claim that we're trying to stifle anything. And I don't disagree that you can rebuild your tower. I don't disagree to that. And I don't disagree that you can co-locate. I think that's good. We have that as an ordinance. At first, when I heard that going through the ZBA, I wasn't quite sure about that, but the more I read about why we did it and the purposes for it, I agree with it. So you and I are 100% in agreement with this. The only thing that I disagree with you on is you guys acquired, bought, or transferred the beneficial use of whatever you want to call it, a footprint of property on the fire department's land that held the current tower. That tower served a purpose. It did what it was supposed to do. If you want to rebuild it, God bless you, rebuild it. You're asking to put three users on there, which requires a sturdier tower, which I get. I understand that. I mean, you can't put three on there in the same type of tower and expect it to hold it. Everything you have said is logical. Where you lose me, and where I think you're technically incorrect, is this site, and you rely on this fact, that the site has a pre-existing setback requirement or setback allowance and a pre-existing special use. You and I will both agree on that. Where I disagree with you on is that you can come and change the type of tower that's going to go on what was already approved. That tower was approved as a monopole concealed antenna for a very special reason. A letter was sent by the fire district for the first hearing back, I think it was last spring, in support of the approval of this, to be approved to replace the tower, saying, hey, we've worked hard to keep this concealed antenna-type tower there and keep the sleek look that was there before the last approval was made for the special use. And I agree with the fire district on that. I just don't know where you think that because you have an existing special use, which you're not, you're not asking to change, you're not reapplying for that special use, where you can say that you can change the type of that tower just because you want to put three users on there. The internet is littered with concealed antenna manufacturers and installers and design engineers. I'm trying to figure out how you are moving away from that concealed look that was approved in 1998 and where you think you have the right to do that in the first place.
Thank you, alderman. Just to clarify, you know, the reason why Crown is applying for an amendment to the special use permit is to have the new design approved because the previous special use permit was for the existing design. So Crown does not disagree that the city council must approve the amendment to the special use permit in order for Crown to be able to construct the new tower. That's why we're here. That's why we're seeking the amendment. The only thing that I would say further about that is that the Telecommunications Act limits the authority of local authorities, such as the city council, to deny applications for, such as this application for the approval of a location for certain reasons. And two of those reasons are relevant here.
I just want to stop you. You're saying we're trying to deny what you're already using there as a special use?
No, no. What I'm saying is that if this, if the city council were to deny the application for an amendment to the special use permit in order to permit one of the proposed tower designs that is before you tonight, that could potentially violate the Telecommunications Act, which prohibits local authorities from making decisions that have the effect of prohibiting service and/or substantially or unreasonably discriminate among carriers. And previously on the record, we have described those aspects of the Telecommunication Act and some of the case law that has been decided under the act and how it might relate to this case. I don't, I don't need to go into that any further, but I think that is, that's the crux of the matter.
I think you do. I think you do need to go into it further because I'm trying to figure out where we're stopping you. You have the right to build 110, 100-foot, you asked to go down to 100-foot, 100-foot tower and co-locate three users on that. I don't think anybody at all, the ZBA or the public or anyone, has, has said that you can't do that. You gave three bullet points in your PowerPoint you did at our July, I believe it was 29th meeting, and you referenced three parts of the Telecommunication Act, Section 704A, about us discriminating against providers. Nobody's ever tried to discriminate against any providers. We, I think we've said that there's not an issue with co-locating. So I don't know where that, where that even, that even comes into place. You also say that we, that we're not able to prohibit people from having personal wireless devices. That site's been a wireless use for 22 years. So if everything you're saying that we're trying to prevent you from doing, you either already do or have the right to do, we're just saying stick with the plan. You bought this site with a concealed antenna configuration. I don't know if you knew it at the time. Maybe it's something you're looking back and say, damn, we should have not done that. But you bought it with a concealed antenna type. I'm all in favor of you moving forward. I'd vote right now, yes, for you to do that if you keep your promise that you bought what that was conveyed to you through the previous special use and stick with that. That's all I'm asking. Is that, you feel that that violates the FCC Act that you keep referencing?
Well, you can consult with the city's owner attorney about, you know, legal advice with respect to the Telecommunication Act.
Hold on. I, I. I'm asking you that question.
I will explain to you, I will explain to, I will explain to you Crown's position, but if, you know, if you are, if you don't understand it, then you can consult with, with your attorney. I'm not in a position to give you legal advice about it. But the reason why, as a practical matter, as you know, Crown cannot put three antennas on the existing pole because the existing pole is not capable of housing three antennas. And so what you've all said respectfully is not relevant because we require an approval from the city council in order to install a new pole, in order to have the three antennas co-located at this location. And because we require that approval of the city council in order to do what Crown would like to do, the city council's potential denial of that approval would be subject to the Telecommunication Act. And there is case, lots of case law about the Telecommunication Act. Some of it has to do with effectively prohibiting service. The basic standard there is that if there's a demonstrated coverage gap, which there is according to the testimony and other evidence presented in the record, including from RF engineers, and the location is the only feasible location to address the coverage gap, and the local authority denies the application that would allow for the equipment necessary to address that coverage gap, that can be, under the law, substantially prohibiting or effectively prohibiting service. Additionally, there is case law under the act that's prohibiting service. Additionally, there is case law under the act that says when, when somebody proposes to replace an existing tower with another tower, and the existing tower has one carrier, and the proposed tower would have multiple carriers, and the local authority denies the application that would allow for multiple carriers to be in the same location, that can, that can unreasonably discriminate against the other carriers who are not currently able to occupy a space at the current location. So that is the, that is the reason why, you know, we believe that the Telecom Act applies in this case. And if you'd like, you know, further counsel about that, I recommend that you speak with the city's attorney.
This is Morgan Adams again. I think you avoided Alderman Love Dickson's questions. I mean, where nobody's telling you that we won't approve a mono, some, a monopole, a concealed monopole that could house three carriers. What they're telling you is that we are looking to have the same concealed design as we have in the original pole, which we understand you have to construct a new pole to do. But what you're not, and what you're avoiding is answering the question as to whether you can put those concealed designs with three carriers in that new pole so it will be more aesthetic looking and, and you just don't want to give us another design. That's what I think you're saying. And you're just, you're avoiding the question.
I think I, I think I, thank you, Alderman. I think I addressed that, that question earlier, which is that it's theoretically possible to have other types of designs. But these are the designs that were prepared by Crown in consultation with the carriers based on the carriers' needs. And, you know, during the first public hearing before the PZBA, when, when Crown received concerns and comments regarding the initial monopole design, it's my understanding that there was discussion about potential alternative designs. And that led to Crown withdrawing its first application and submitting the new application with the monopine design. That would have been the opportunity to explore other types of designs potentially. But through those discussions, this was the alternative design that, that emerged. And, you know, at this point, you're correct, Alderman. At this point, we've been doing, we've been at this for more than a year. And the Crown respectfully requests the city council to consider the two options before it.
Well, I think what you're telling us is you're trying to cram it down our throats. And so, and I don't agree with that. I think that's incorrect. And I don't think you're going to succeed in court either with that kind of an attitude or, or an argument. So, I mean, we're asking you to consider another design. I think that there are other designs. I've seen other designs. I've taken pictures of them. And I've seen those concealed designs with a nice slim overgreen over it that looks very nice. So I don't know why you can't do that. And I know they can, you can do that with three carriers. So you're not telling me you can't do it. You're telling me you won't. Am I correct?
Alderman, I don't know whether the alternative designs would function correctly at this site. That would have had to have been explored much earlier in the process with consultation from the carriers.
Carl, Carl, first of all, about the carriers, you told, I've heard at the previous meetings, you didn't even have all your carriers. So you keep talking about all, you know, all these carriers are telling you what they can and can't do. Isn't it true? I think you said at our last meeting, you can't even tell us what the antenna are going to look like until this deal is done so you can sign up carriers. Isn't that true? So you don't know what the antennas are going to look like.
We do not know what the specific design of each individual antenna will look like. But Crown does consult with the carriers at the early stage of design to make sure that the potential structure that's being proposed will work within those carriers' networks. And they do have commitments from carriers if the site becomes approved. That's all, there's a difference between whether the, the general design concept will work and then what the specific design of the individual antennas will be once, once the concept is approved and, and they need to advance to the next stage of design.
So since we're so into the infancy of the design of this thing in the first place, which it sounds like what you're saying, because you don't know who the carriers are and you don't know what they're going to ask for, would you accept as a, as a, like a stipulation to this approval that you will use concealed antennas in your tower? Because you're telling us right now, we can't stop you on whatever kind of tower that you want to put in. Otherwise, you're going to run to the FCC and tell them, we're holding up carriers, we're holding up personal cell use, personal wireless services. But you don't even know what kind of antennas you use. Why is it so hard for you to commit to us to say, we will stick with the original approval from 1998 that had concealed antennas and will move forward? I'm willing to take a vote right now outside of this approval to see if the council agrees, if they agree that we're not holding this up for the radio, radio radiation issue, if we agree to the, to your request for three co-locates, and we agree to you to build a new tower. I think you, I'm not going to speak for everybody, but I think you'd probably get a, a yes to that. But why are you so reluctant to do that, to help this thing move forward and get done?
I don't have the authority to respond to that, Alderman. Crown has prepared two applications that it knows will, will accomplish the objectives of the carriers at this site. I don't know whether Crown would be able to make a fully concealed structure work at this site. And therefore, I can't, I can't tell you that, that the Crown would accept that. There are representatives of Crown present. I don't, I don't know if they have anything that they'd like to add to that. But I, I don't have the authority to accept that kind of proposal.
Crown, if you're there, speak up.
Is there anybody from Crown there?
Yeah, this is Travis Schenk. And I'm, I'm not, I have the authority to change, change the design of the 11th hour as either. There are... I think that what we're looking at here is, is issues with, with RF. I tried to explain this before. Just the fact that when you change the design, you change the parameters of the, of the deployment. And it goes back to the carrier for them to, to try and figure out. You may need to add height in order to stack, stack the antenna arrays on top of each other. So Verizon would have two levels or, Brett would have, have to have two levels to, in order to, to, to get the antennas shrunk in. And so then you're, you're looking at an increase in, in height of the tower. You know, the, the PZ, the PZBA, they, they kind of, they, they asked us to shrink the size of the, the monopine branches to make sure that it was in the, within the compound. And that's, that's, that's understandable. And I, I think that that's kind of the, the, the idea of a planning commission and council members to put some conditions around these special use approvals. And I will say too that, that there were conversations that Crown tried to have with the community at the initial planning and zoning board hearing. And then afterwards, outside of the hearing, and no, no recommendations of, of what would be acceptable, was, was provided. And I've, I've worked in communities from California to, to Florida and beyond, working with them for ideas of what would fit within their, within their community. And all of them wanted to participate in something that would, that would, that all parties would be, would be happy with. And this community has, they've actually ignored all of our, our inquiries on what, on what would work. So I, I'm not for sure that designing something that at this late, late in the, in the hour is going to be, is going to work. I think it's a little late for that. And I think that's why Crown is asking you to make a decision, one way or the other. Make a decision. And use all the information that you've been provided through two, two public hearings to, to do that. And that's, that's really all I have to say about it.
This is Alderman Dola. Can I make a comment, please?
Go ahead.
Thank you. A couple of things. First of all, you mentioned that, in this, I'm addressing this to the people from Crown Castle, you've mentioned that a concealed tower might be larger in some, in some respects, either a larger footprint or a taller in height. But that's very nonspecific. It doesn't give us much to go on. And I think all we were asking for is to get those specifics. And I know we've been at this a long time, but I have to say, from a personal standpoint, it's very frustrating that the, the position that we're being placed in here, when it's, it's almost like being strong-armed. You either approve something or we'll see you in court. That's, that's not a very friendly relationship. And I think the comments being made earlier are such that we're trying to work through this. And we, we would approve certain things. It's not worth, that we're against any kind of a tower there. We would like to work with you, but it's just such a difficult situation that we're being placed in tonight. And I don't like that situation of saying, we have to approve something or else. That's very difficult. And I'll, I'll stop there.
This is Carl Kimalucci. I'd like to respond to that because there's been a lot of water under the bridge before we got to this meeting tonight. Crown Castle came to the city with an application in the spring of 2019 and submitted an application and had a public hearing before the PZBA, at which it received comments about the design, and it voluntarily agreed to withdraw its application, redesign the proposed tower, and submit a new application at the expense of time and, and, and money by Crown, and then went through the whole process again with the PZBA, to come up to the city council back in March of, of this year, and to have the city council refer it back to the PZBA, and then for the, to have another, another PZBA hearing, and then to come back to the city council again. And this is the first time that the city council has suggested that it's willing to work with Crown on a design. And Crown, throughout the process, the reason why it withdrew its application and submitted a new one, and the reason why it attempted to offer an alternative design was because it was trying in good faith to accommodate the comments by various members of the public, the PZBA, and the city council. But after, you know, more than a year of this, well, more than a year, it's, it's late to have this discussion. And so Crown's intention is not to say, to, to put you in that kind of position, Alderman Dola. But from Crown's perspective, this, this application process has gone long enough and it needs to either have this application approved or not. Because from a, from a business perspective, it, it doesn't make sense to continue having these conversations. Crown feels like it's done what it can reasonably do under the circumstances. And now it's time for the city council to make a decision about the applications that are before it.
And I understand those comments. But you say you don't mean to put us in that position. We are in that position. I mean, there, the, the bottom line is we are in that position. We either approve something or you're going to take us to court. Isn't that correct?
Well, I'm not, I can't say exactly what will happen if the application is not approved tonight. Crown has always strongly preferred and remains this way to have the application approved to the normal process. And with the give and take that's occurred throughout this process, including the redesign of the tower and the offering of alternatives to the city, rather than having to explore its legal remedies in the event of a disapproval. So we hope very much that it won't come to that. But Alderman, at the end of the day, it's the city council's job to approve, approve the application or disapprove the application. Crown can't be expected to go through the process for an indefinite period of time. In fact, the Telecommunication Act requires that a final decision be made within a certain period of time. And Crown has already agreed voluntarily to extend that time to allow the PZBA and the city council to further deliberate and come to a final decision, you know, within, within a reasonable period of time. But I, I think tonight, we've reached the, the end of that period from Crown's perspective. Again, Crown's been going at this since March of 2019. That's well more than a year. And from its perspective, the city has had a reasonable time to consider and deliberate and recommend or request accommodations. Crown has tried to address the feedback that it has received. And, and now Crown would like to have a, a decision.
I understand. Just one last comment. I want you to know that none of us are doing this or going through this to try and buy time or waste time. That's not our intention at all. We're just trying to look for something that might be agreeable to everyone, including the residents, the city itself. We're not doing that, that, I can only speak for myself. We are not doing this to try and waste time or buy time. I just want to make that clear.
I understand that, Alderman. I appreciate that. And Crown doesn't believe that that's what anybody is doing either. But at the same time, at, at this point, as I said before, Crown believes a reasonable amount of time has passed for the process to unfold and for all of the information deliberation to occur. And notwithstanding what you've just said, which we appreciate, and the Crown would still respectfully request a decision on the application before you.
Well, Carl, it's my hope, hearing you, that you just want a resolution to this and for me to, to take that at your word that you do want to resolve this so that both parties are happy. If this is not approved, you know, there's going to be a process after this anyway. I'm just telling you that I don't disagree with your tower for any of the reasons that you've listed in those FCC bullet points that you provided. I can't speak for the entire council, but I think that everything you've asked for, with the exception of modifying the existing special use, is what you're trying to do is modify the existing special use without actually applying for that, which I think to me is a somewhat technical aspect of this. It's unusual. You gotta remember too, that it's not for the council to get involved with the ZBA process. Maybe it's different here than it is in California, but we have a ZBA that we're not supposed to influence. You know, I don't typically go to their meetings to try and tell them how to vote. It comes to us. And here we sit right now at the final decision tonight. And it's going to be voted on one way or the other tonight. And, you know, if it's voted no, obviously you guys won't be happy about that. And there's going to be a delay. I'm just telling you, I'm open to, to discuss with you the only little tiny aspect of the type of tower you're going to use. Not whether you can co-locate, not that you can have three people on there, even though you don't know who all three are. I'm more than willing to work with you on that. Dan knows my position. I think the council understands this. And, and it's not unusual too for us to come to the very end of a process like this and actually come to an agreement at the meeting. You know, there's nothing wrong with you saying, okay, Pat, or okay, city council, we can go to a concealed antenna, let us work it out. If that's okay, then we'll just get it approved by Dan and move forward. There's nothing, there's nothing wrong with that process. Are you not willing to use that process?
I think the difficulty here is that we can't say with certainty that a concealed tower would work at this location. And therefore, that's not a condition of approval that we could accept. And secondly, you know, this is the first time that this type of overture has been made to Crown. You know, we were before the council, you know, in the spring, there was no, no type of discussion of that kind of accommodation then. And we were there two weeks ago, and there was no type of discussion about that then. And so, you know, again, I, I think from Crown's perspective, it, it has done its best to address the reasonable concerns that have been expressed. And it's offered two alternatives. And it's very late in the process to begin considering other alternatives that could easily cause delay, delay the, the, the project by another six months to a year. And that's, that's not, that's not a reasonable timeframe for, for Crown, given what's happened already.
So, Carl, you don't, just, I don't want to belabor this, but you don't even know what kind of antennas you're putting up yet. So you still have to go through a process of the antennas. That's my whole point with this thing. Can't- of the antennas. That's my whole point with this thing. Can't we just agree to new concealed antennas? So then your carriers know what they have to do. I mean, you don't know what they are, so you can't say we're delaying you because you couldn't run to us to get a permit to put these antennas up right now, could you? If we said yes tonight, are you prepared to file final documents this week to say, here's what we're putting up? If it's taken a year and a half, and you've been so ready for this, will that be something you do this week if you get approval for all three carrier type, antenna types?
No, but that's, that's not the issue. The issue, we, Crown knows that if it's using exterior mount towers, either the monopole or the monopine design will accommodate the needs of the carriers with which it's discussed this location. It does not know whether a concealed design would be able to accommodate the needs of the carriers with which it has discussed this location, or any other carrier for that matter. And so Crown is not in a position to agree to a condition that all of the antennas be concealed.
You know, this is Morgan Adams one more time here. I mean, you know, you, you don't know, but you don't want to find out. So you'd rather just institute court action than try to work it out. That doesn't make any sense. The council hasn't had this issue very much compared to the PZBA, and the time delay that you talk about is really the COVID issue. And that was not our delay. That was, that was the COVID issue that caused a lot of, caused a lot of problems with respect to anything that would be accomplished anywhere in terms of progress made, being made, and in many projects. So, I mean, you're blaming us for, for the COVID-19, which is not appropriate and not reasonable. We're offering you a way to try to work this out as opposed to having a long, lengthy fight in court. And we're asking you to consider something that you don't even know that you can't do. But since you don't know if you can't do it, why can't you offer to do it? I mean, to tell, to try to tell us you're going to shove it down our throat does not help either side. It really doesn't. We're trying to work with you, and we'd like to have an ability to do this in a way that it would be more aesthetic, and it would, it would at least be something that everyone would be able to accept. So I don't feel against that.
This application first came before the City Council in March of 2020, which was a year after the first application was filed. So, you know, Crown recognizes that COVID-19 was a factor in the timing, and was, you know, more than happy to accommodate, you know, delays related to COVID-19. But, you know, a lot of things happened before then. But, but that's, you know, that's part of the issue. Part, part of it is just that, again, Crown, Crown has received comments and feedback and suggestions. Based on those comments and feedback and suggestions, proposed some design alternatives. Those are the ones that are before you. And only, only today, you know, August 10th of 2020, are, are these additional alternatives being offered. And Crown is not, doesn't not know whether the types of alternatives that the council is describing tonight will be feasible for carriers at this location, and therefore, it cannot agree to an approval that's conditioned on concealed facilities. So...
I want you to find out whether you can do it.
I don't know the answer to that, Alderman, but I, I don't think that our, our position is going to change here. You know, with respect, I, I understand what you're suggesting, but from Crown's perspective, as I said before, it's given the city more than a reasonable amount of time to consider this request and come up with alternatives and engage in dialogue. And at this point, Crown would like to know whether it will be approved or not, and, and then move forward.
I, I think that's really silly of you to take that position, because it doesn't make any sense.
All right, let's hold it a minute. John O'Driscoll, are you there? Hello, John?
Yes, Mayor. Yes, Mayor.
I'm thinking that maybe the cows will be coming home pretty soon if we keep this up. Everything's going to repeat us four and five and six times. What I would like to suggest, if it's possible, let's table this for two weeks, if Crown a chance, at least a quick chance, or maybe a illogical chance, but a, a chance to try to understand and work out what Alderman Lovickson has brought up. And I think most of us, if not all of us, agree to what he's brought up. And have a special meeting at the end of two weeks. Because I, you know, I say the same thing. We're not here to hurt anybody. We need business. We want the city to have business. And we don't want to alienate our residents. That's who we work for. So there's a, you know, a position, several positions we have to think about. If the, God, if you think that's just something doable, then tell me. If you don't think that's doable, then I'm going home with the cows. So...
Mayor, interesting idea. I would ask for Mr. Camalucci's input on that.
Yes, of course. But if it's doable, you know, I'd like to convince the council to accept that. And let's hear from Mr. Camalucci.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Go ahead.
I don't think you're gonna, I don't think you're gonna toss this out for a two-week, you know, resting period. That would be ill put, and we're not going to do it that way either. So what is your answer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not authorized to extend, further extend the review period under the Telecommunication Act for a final decision by the City Council. Oh, wait, I, I would need to consult with my client about whether or not it would agree to tabling the item for two weeks. If you give me a moment to see if I can reach a representative of Crown about that, I will, I will try to get an answer for you.
All right, the clock is ticking. You have two minutes. Can we go on, Joe?
Hi, Mayor?
Yes.
This is Alderman Cameron. We're not, we're not, the meeting for, in two weeks has been, has been canceled. So we're not going to meet until September.
All right. Well, we'll set a meeting date, you know, reasonably around that, that amount of time. Maybe it's two weeks and two days or something. We can set it anytime. So let's just see if they're willing to tune in on what I'm suggesting. Let's get the, the next issue going on the warrants.
Okay, Mayor. If I...
I'm here.
All right. I, thank you. I will continue with the warrants for now. Approval of warrants, we have a total of $243,554.68. We also have wire payments. We have a July 31st, 2020 payroll posting of $159,805.93. We also have a July Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund in the amount of $34,035.51, bringing the total warrant to $437,396.12 for council's approval.
All right, motion to approve as presented.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Second, please.
Second, Quinn.
We have a motion by Alderman Dolek. We have a second by Alderman Quinn. And let's take a roll call, please.
Alderman Dolek?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams? Sorry, Alderman Morgan Adams? Alderman Lovickson?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. With regard to two weeks, that's a reference to somewhere around two weeks, maybe two days after two weeks, or something that we have to, still poll everyone and try to get a uniform agreement. But it won't be a month, for example. So that's my recommendation, because we're, we're making no gains here whatsoever. They're steadfast on what they're talking about, and we're steadfast in what we're talking about. And in the meantime, I'd like to get agreement as to what we have on the table. And that is what Mr. Lovickson pointed out quite eloquently, something that can be, can be done. If they're business guys, they'll look at it. Two weeks isn't going to kill them, especially with not even having the users lined up yet. So let's wait for a few more minutes and see what they come back with. It doesn't matter that they hurt all us either. So, by the way, I would recommend we do that anyway. Table it for a future date, so the two-week extension time, time suggestion. And if you can't find anyone to get approval, then we'll do it anyway, because we're not going to vote on this tonight.
Should we pick a date, Mrs. Morgan Adams? Should we pick a date, just so that we will have a date in two weeks, approximately two weeks?
Yeah. But you need, you know, all five to be present, because if it takes four, I believe I can vote on that particular issue, but I'm not anxious to do that. So, yeah, let's go ahead and talk.
So today's...
Put, put your microphones on. You have to talk.
What about the 27th? Well, that's the same night as the PZBA meeting. That probably would not be good, right?
That is correct, Alderman.
Maybe the 26th?
Can't do it on the 26th.
25th?
How about the 29th?
Yeah.
That's a Saturday, right?
Probably.
Yeah.
I could do the 21st and the 25th.
You know, we could do, we could do it in, in the morning, too. We don't have to do it at night.
The morning might be hard because I've got court hearings.
I have a job.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, you have a great job here, but I can just absolutely two cents, you get grounded.
So, so who can be available on the 24th or 25th?
Why don't we just do it on the 24th, which is a regular date anyway?
That's fine for me.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, that's good for me. That's good for me.
Wendy, yeah.
Fine.
All right, that's good for me. So that'll, that'll, with this hip missing, I didn't get my vacation this year, but I can't do it now anyway. So, learn how to walk.
It would be us to wait till the 31st or the 1st.
The 31st is fine.
I think that Monday is good. I mean, everybody was able to do it. Let's do it that Monday.
Yeah.
But let's hear, let's still hear from Carl.
Yeah, of course.
Where'd he go?
Where'd he go?
I'm here. I'm here. I've been trying to reach a representative of our client who would have authority to consent to tabling the item for further dialogue with the council. And I'm still in the process of working on that. I know, based on the previous conversations that I've had with, with the client, that, you know, it, it strongly desired to have a, a final decision today. And I think the council members know that, you know, there's been correspondence between us on behalf of Crown and the city regarding that. And so, you know, in order to respond to the request, we need to be able to get in touch with the right people to, to see if we have authority to agree to that. I, I guess one question that comes to mind, however, is, you know, if, if, if the council were to table this item until the 24th, as I believe I overheard you discussing before I came back on, you know, what, what does that process look like? And what commitment does Crown have from the city in terms of that process? And what might get accomplished between now and then?
Well, I think we're looking for Crown to come back with our concern, if it can be done. Hopefully, that'll happen. We're going to table this anyway, till the 24th, and hopefully you can reach a reasonable conclusion. Well, you know what we want. You heard it several times tonight. And we'll go from there. Either approve it or not. It'll all be in your lap at this point.
Mr. Mayor, since this is in the fourth ward, dead smack in the middle of it, I would be more than happy to meet with Carl or any representatives of Crown Castle now that this matter, I mean, Carl, you understand the process. Like I said earlier, I'm a process guy. This is now in our lap as of today. Prior to that, it was not. So now that it is on our end, and we've already committed to meet in two weeks, not to say that we're not going to, if you say no, we're still meeting in two weeks anyway to discuss this. So I'd be more than happy to meet with you between now and then. There is a leader from the home, from the residents over there, too, that I'm in close contact with. As far as any specifics you're looking for, we could work that out tomorrow morning at 8:30 if you want, as far as like the details. And it just goes to concealed antenna. I mean, that's as simple as it is. But if you want to talk about it, I could talk to you tomorrow morning, 8:30 if you want.
All right. So that's where we're going. Let's get rid of one other thing. Well, let's table this issue now. We're going to table it anyway.
I, I want you to move to table this issue till 24th of August.
All right. And it'll be at the regular time, 6:30. Is that the idea?
Yes.
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 Second.
Quinn.
We have a second by Alderman Quinn. If there's nothing else there for the moment, let's have a roll call.
Thank you. Alderman Lovickson?
Aye.
Alderman Dolek?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Motion passes, and Joe, and Alderman Lovickson, anyone else, let's work on a, an approach before that. We have the approach. We know what we want. Let's get it down in writing, if we can do that. One quick thing, public comments on non-agenda matters.
Mr. Mayor, can I just say one question? This is Morgan Adams.
Yes.
It's been a, not a controversy, but I was under the impression that we needed to have four votes to overturn the PZBA denial. Is that still correct? That's asked by Attorney Driscoll.
We've had two opinions on that, so I'd rather have John O'Driscoll put it in writing and let us know.
Okay.
Yep. It's three fifths of the Alderman.
Then that would be four votes, correct? Four Aldermen out of five. Is that correct?
Three fifths, three fifths of the Alderman are needed.
That's three out of five.
To overturn a PZBA recommendation.
Or is that three or four?
It's three. Three, three out of five.
You told us before it was four, so that's what I was asking. Okay.
No, Alderman Morgan Adams is two-thirds. So there's a difference in the voting requirement on a variation versus a special use. Variation is a two-thirds, so it would require four, where a special use is a three-fifths. So that's the difference.
Okay, got it.
All right. So back to, to Crown for last comment.
Thank you, Mayor. We don't have any other comments right now. We will be in touch during this period. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Mayor, Mayor, one last thing. I believe we have item number 10, public comment on non-agenda items.
I just said that. Nobody responded. I just said it. Three minutes, Carl.
He did.
That's true.
He did. Do we have somebody?
Can I say something?
No. Everybody said enough. All right. So motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
We have a second. Boris Wolf, all in favor, say aye. We have a second. Voice, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.